Aren't you guys ready?
Yep.
Good evening, everybody. If I could get everybody to take a seat. Before we get started, I would like to ask our chaplain Remco Brahma to lead us in implication.
Well, let's pray together. Our Father in Heaven, we come to you as people who have been called to be stewards of all that you have created, and we are thankful for that calling, that privilege, and acknowledge that the responsibility of that often exceeds our capabilities. And so we ask that tonight we might live and walk in a manner that is worthy of that calling. We pray for the mayor and the city council and the staff that's assembled here tonight, that you give them wisdom and strength and grace to administer the affairs of this city in a manner that is worthy of this calling and for the good of its citizens and the future of this city. We pray that your favor would rest on this city and all of its residents and all of its citizens and all of its visitors, and that tonight your strength and your protection and your courage would rest upon the police officers and firefighters personnel that watch over our well-being, protect us and service and response to emergencies. We pray these things in your most holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Remco. Good evening. Want to welcome everybody here tonight to our regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, September 8th, 2014, to order. Our city clerk, who's the city clerk tonight?
That'd be me.
That'd be you?
Yes.
All right, will our city clerk please call a roll and make any announcement?
Couple of additions, yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Be happy to call roll for the September 8th, 2014, regular meeting. Like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearings or during the call for public comments, you're required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that speaker cards were received by me prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if that is applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization and on a form provided by the city manager prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you would expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coons.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk is absent. Councilmember Barrett Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria is absent, and Councilmember Rick Moore.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening. We appreciate everybody being here, and we look forward to hearing from everybody that's got comments or an opinion on an item. Also want to take a second and explain, some of you that possibly haven't been here in a while realize we have to, instead of coming in this door, we've got to come in this door and have security. And I want to let you know that's in reference to a state law that was enacted, so that is not something that City Milton just decided to do to make it a little tougher to get in here. So we appreciate your patience and sorry for any inconvenience on that. So if our, with that, if our city clerk would please call the next item.
The next item is approval of the meeting agenda. It's agenda item number 14236. Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of suggestions for modification tonight. One is to move from the public hearing to new business, consideration of a waiver regarding dual representation for Forsyth County and the City of Milton related to CP 130014, simply published on the agenda in the wrong area. As well as remove the one resolution that's on the agenda tonight until a date in the future when there can be somebody here to receive it. And those are the two modifications. Mayor, I can tell you that we have an abundance of comments tonight. It looks as though the public rights of way within Crooked Creek would be the most popular item with the public tonight, so if you wanted to move that in front of what might be a lengthy budget presentation, that might make sense as well.
Okay. I'd be glad to present that to the council. Okay. Anything else? Anybody else in the council have any on the agenda? If not, I'll ask for a motion, and then also based on what our city manager's recommendations were, and I can read those out if we need to reread them. Or if we see who wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as modified by the city manager, including the moving of item three under our public hearing up to item two, swapping items two and three.
That's perfect. Second. Okay. Motion for approval from Councilmember Thurman, a second, from Councilmember Coons. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Next item is going to be public comment or general public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own hearing during tonight's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city manager. If there's anybody else that has a comment, there are, where are the cards in the back?
Over here on this table.
Okay, the yellow cards. We can, we'll still take this. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in the conversation. When your name is called, please step forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. Now, I will say this, if there's several comments or several folks that want to speak on an item, I'll be glad to consider lengthening that time so everybody gets an opportunity. So, do we have any general public comment, Chris?
Mr. Mayor, we're going to have one tonight that's related to an item that's on the consent, or that's on in first presentation, but tonight these comments will be heard during general comment, which is Lisa Bue Miller.
And just for clarification, because that particular item's on first presentation, which we don't, would not have any discussion on tonight, but under general comment.
All right, thank you. I appreciate you just letting me say something.
Sure.
I'm Lisa Bue Miller. I live at 14708 Taylor Valley Way. It's in Taylor Glen. My property abuts, Little River Farm, and I'd meant to come to the original meeting with a planning meeting, and I missed it, and I wish I had, because it's a little disappointing that it seems like there's opposition from another development, Belmont, though there doesn't seem to be much from our subdivision. I'd hate to see it go, and I think that what they're proposing, even initially, even after the changes that the planning board has put forth, I think they've bent over backwards for Belmont. I mean, they've moved a parking lot towards our backyard, so the lights are going to now shine towards us when they're on two major roads and there's a golf maintenance facility, which makes more sense in the road. I don't really understand that, but I'm still for it. I mean, if I have to have the parking lot there, I would. So I really hope that you take that. They want to, I guess, do it at 10:00, and I really think that you should allow them to do it till 11:00. When they did it, we didn't hear any sound at all. Sorry, I didn't realize you would let me speak, so.
No, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Okay, we have, is that the last general public comment?
Yes, that's all.
Okay. If city manager will please call the next item.
Consent agenda tonight, Mayor Council, is item number one, approval of the August 4th, 2014, regular city council meeting minutes, agenda item number 14237. Second, approval of the August 11th, 2014, work session meeting minutes, agenda item number 14238. Item three is approval of the August 18th, 2014, regular city council meeting minutes, it's agenda item number 14239. Number four is approval of a design-build agreement between the City of Milton and the Cloverleaf Group LLC for the design and construction of the Crab Apple Pavilion, agenda item number 14240. Item five is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Nova Engineering and Environmental LLC for geotechnical monitoring and testing services at Bell Memorial Park. Number six is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Mira Electrical Contractors Incorporated for the installation of a scoreboard at Hopewell Middle School, agenda item number 14242. Number seven is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and South Cover Incorporated for the installation of two batting cages at Hopewell Middle School, it's agenda item number 14243. Number eight is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Fund Fair to provide services for the 2014 Crab Apple Fest, it's agenda item number 14244. And number nine is approval of the professional services contract between the City of Milton and Effective Communications Incorporated for the development of a social media policy, agenda item number 14245.
Okay. I have a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the, approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Okay. Got a motion from Councilmember Moore, a second. Councilmember Hewitt, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay. We'll move on to reports and presentations. The proclamation, we have moved that to another meeting. So we'll move to first presentation, Chris.
First presentation tonight, Mr. Mayor. Item number one, consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 6, Division 13, fund balance policy, to modify how the minimum fund balance and surplus fund balance are determined and to redefine how surplus fund balance can be used, agenda item number 14246. Number two is consideration of U 1402-14505 Batesville Road by LRF Milton LLC to operate a rural event facility, Section 64-1842, it's agenda item number 14247. Three is consideration of an ordinance to adopt amendments to the fiscal 2014 budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, amending the amounts shown in each budget as expenditures, amending the several items of revenue anticipations prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available, it's agenda item number 14248. Number four is consideration of an ordinance to the mayor and council of the City of Milton, Georgia, to adopt the fiscal 2015 budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, appropriating the amounts shown in each budget as expenditures, adopting the several items of revenue anticipations prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available, it's agenda item number 14249. And that is the first presentation items tonight.
Okay. They have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the first presentation items. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second, from Councilmember Coons. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Looks like that's unanimous. Okay. City manager will please sound the first item on the public hearing.
Moving into our public hearing, the first item was moved to new business, and the other two items were swapped. So the first item tonight will be consideration of the abandonment of all public rights of way within the Crooked Creek subdivision. It's agenda item number 14251. Public Works Director Carter Lucas.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is the initial public hearing for the request to abandon all of the rights of way within the Crooked Creek subdivision. Under our particular process, an application is afforded an initial consideration by council, which was done on April 14th. That is not a public hearing, but simply a process that allows the application to move forward through the process, and then two public hearings prior to any formal action taken by the council. In the past, as you know, we've only had one public hearing for these abandonment requests, anytime that we have an application with 100%.
Excuse me one second, Carter. Jim, would you mind peeking out the door? I had a couple of folks that tried to get in, and I think went the wrong way. Somebody, if you don't mind. All right, I apologize, Carter.
Oh, yeah, no problem. So in any application where we had 100% approval, that only requires one public hearing, which is what we've done in the past. In this particular case, we don't have 100% approval, so we'll have two public hearings, the one tonight and the one currently scheduled for October 6th. At that second public hearing, you'll get a full staff report and recommendations from staff on what we believe should happen with the disposition of the right of way, and then at that meeting, there'll be an action by council, one way or the other, on the abandonment request. And so with that, this intent on this meeting was to be fairly straightforward, to allow the general public to make any comments for or against this particular application, as well as having that opportunity on October 6th. And so with that, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor, for the public hearing portion of this.
Okay. Before we start public hearing, comments, does anybody have any questions for Carter in the process? Okay. All right, then we will go ahead and open up for public comments on this hour. Chris?
Okay. Public comments of the cards that I have tonight, Mr. Mayor. Anyway, that'll be better. Of the cards that I have tonight, they all indicate that they are in support of the, or we have one in opposition of the agenda item, but the rest are in support, so we'll start with support if that's fine, and we'll move into opposition. The first one in support tonight is Carl Westmoreland. And before the comments start, I know you indicated that you had interest in hearing what everybody had to say. Would you like me to time this public hearing, or do you just want to see how it goes? I'll let you.
Go ahead and time it, but if we, we'll be glad to add some time that way. We'll be sure to add some to the opposition, although.
Okay. Not quite sure how to do this, but we'll see.
If not, we'll go ahead.
That's the wrong button. That's the wrong button.
I'll tell you what, we'll, we'll just move forward and just everybody, everybody be respectful of the time. All right, Mr. Westmoreland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Carl Westmoreland, 3343 Peach Street Road. And I already know you don't want to hear much from me. I am representing the Homeowners Association. We've submitted an application, as Mr. Lucas said, several months ago. We've been working with him. I understand that you don't want to hear anything about the technical part of the application, and I will reserve all of that until October 6th, but I'm here to answer questions if you have them, as is John Walker, who we have retained as a traffic engineer with Kemley Horn, who has done studies that have been submitted to your Public Works Department. But to make better use of your time, I think you'll primarily hear from people in Crooked Creek. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh.
It's not that easy, is it?
No, no, I don't know what buttons to put. Our second speaker tonight is Steve Tipton.
I can't recall speaking to an audience when everybody's behind me, but in 2008...
Mr. Tipton, just for the record, if you don't mind, name and address.
Oh, Steve Tipton, 920 Autumn Close, Crooked Creek subdivision, and I'm currently the president of the Homeowners Association. In 2008, Crooked Creek, the residents came together and voted on two issues. One was to build a new clubhouse, pool, and amenities project in the front of their neighborhood. The old one was in disrepair, and we all came together and we voted for that and approved it, and if you go there now, you'll see the fruits of that work. The second vote that happened on the exact same night was also to privatize our roads and to gate the community. Now, we all know that fundamentally, although we approved that by, I believe it was around 82% of the homeowners that were in attendance, that that wasn't possible, because state law, the way it was set, is precluded anybody really from privatizing their roads and gating, because it required 100% of everybody to agree. And with 640 homes, you know that not everybody will agree on everything. So it kind of set as a dream for a lot of people in the neighborhood, many of them have gone and left the neighborhood, but many that are still, still here. That all changed when Representative Jan Jones and the state legislature changed that whole provision and basically moved the power of making decisions back to the local municipalities. And Milton was born almost at the same time. Subsequent to that, this city council made those changes, and today there are guidelines on how you privatize a road and how you could, which would ultimately lead to gating of a community, and they're very specific, very detailed, I would say onerous, and are designed to make sure that the city knows that all of the proper things have been done so that everybody can make good, educated decisions about. Before I continue, I want to take just a minute and, and do thank, you know, city government that have worked with us on this, the mayor and the city council, former and current board members, and I have to say, an amazing group of volunteers in Crooked Creek, and some that don't even live there anymore, that worked on this and that also made Crooked Creek an amazing neighborhood to live in. Today I stand before you representing the will of not just a majority of our homeowners, but the will of a supermajority of our homeowners, 68% of our homeowners. And our goal is to submit and have an application approved for this. We've worked through every single requirement set forth by the City of Milton. We've conducted, I believe it is six town hall meetings outlining the details as best we knew as we were proceeding for the project. We have a homeowners' association that is on very sound financial footing. The city is in receipt of the audited financial statements of our group, and we have both internal strong financials as well as commitments from local banks in the Alpharetta and Milton area, a local bank, to proceed and handle the project. So, what are the reasons to privatize our road? Number one is the safety of our children. Number two is to reduce crime in our community. We have people in our audience that have been affected by break-ins and stuff like that. We want to have better roads. We know that there isn't a limited number of funds that are available by the City of Milton to work on roads every year, and part of what we want to do is to have roads that we have control of and that we can make the best roads we possibly can. We want to have higher value for our community's property. We want to have and continue to have a very high quality of life for all of the people that reside in Crooked Creek in our neighborhood. And believe it or not, we want to reduce the cut-through traffic that comes through on Creek Club Drive. It's a road that was built in our neighborhood as part of the development and was never meant to be a thoroughfare, to come from one, the end of the county, from Forsyth County down into Fulton. And that, of course, is our opinion. So what does it mean for the city? Does it meet the requirement of the best interests of the City of Milton? Well, first of all, the financial obligation for all of our roads comes off your books. The value of the community and the property in our neighborhood, we believe, will increase. And the aesthetic, the aesthetics of Crooked Creek will be a desirable addition, the way it's set up, to the City of Milton and to the, to future people that live in this fast-growing community that we're all in. So today, we ask the city to begin the consideration for privatizing our roads. Let us govern based on the mandate of our residents and our compliance to the terms set forth by the city, and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Teri Rubin.
Okay, you want to repeat that again?
It's Teri Rubin.
Teri Rubin, oh, okay. Here you go.
I didn't say I wanted to speak, but I'll speak because I heard what the gentleman said, and I want to say I'm...
If you wouldn't mind just naming the address, thank you.
My name is Teri Rubin. I live at 3230 Wolf Willow Close, and I'm, I'm a part of the community of Crooked Creek. And I've only been there six years. And my husband and I, when we moved there, we thought it was just a lovely community. I don't live on the main road, but I'm one road off the main road, Creek Club, which gets all the traffic. And I, it has increased over the years, and that's the only reason why I'm really interested in the gate. It's impossible, we're at a stop sign, and it's just impossible between 4:30 and 6:00 to cross the street without taking your life in your hands. I know we've had police there, and they've seen people, and I think it's called a California stop, where all they do is just slow down and look around, and they keep on going. I just think we have become the thoroughfare, and that's the only way to fix the thoroughfare is put a gate in. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chris?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm struggling with this timer thing, but we're about in the neighborhood of nine minutes in, and we've got still several more to go. We'll keep going unless you stop. I'll just make sure we stay balanced.
Counsel, okay with that? Just, just ask everybody to respect the time, but yeah, we'll keep going.
Okay. Laura Weisong.
Mayor and City Council, Laura Weisong, I live at 14305 Creek Club Drive in the Crooked Creek community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Just adding to Mr. Tipton's couple of comments, I think the one key is our road plating was never intended to be a cut-through roadway, and it really wasn't built that way, which is why we have a lot of the traffic issues and safety issues on our current roads. And I would like to add to Teri's last comment, in addition to that, with folks that are constantly speeding and creating a very dangerous environment within our community, which is why I'm in support of gating is really our safety issues and the inability to control speed due to the Georgia state restrictions on where you can actually use equipment in order to catch people from speeding. We are very limited in our community due, due to the hills and some of the ways that we navigate through our community. But another issue is also the growth that is happening to the north of us in Forsyth County. It continues to get worse. Highway 9 is the key thoroughfare. When it backs up, we are the cut-through to get back and go to St., to Francis Road and get on Highway 9 on the back way. During between 4:00 and 6:00, I could chase cars and watch the stack up in the back, and most of the people don't live in the neighborhood. So to me, those are the big issues, as well as all of the ones that Mr. Tipton mentioned, and I do, do support gating for all of those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next part has two names, Joe and Christine Noble. I don't think they both want to speak. Or just one, Joe and Christine Noble.
Hello, I'm Joe Noble. It's my wife, Christine. We live at 14400 Creek Club Drive, so we're a few houses past the second stop sign on the main road. Obviously, we're going to be for the, the gating. We've lived in there 11 years, so we were there before stop signs were even put in. I don't know if the stop signs, you know, have really, there's stop and go. I think it's more of a touch and go, like we said earlier. We're outside a lot. I mean, we've, we've got kids in sports, so some of the, the traffic that just constantly flows through there and the speed of, I mean, I've seen people, you know, being three, four houses past a stop sign, they're doing 50 or 60 miles an hour. And with small kids, and not, not just ours, but it's not a matter of if something's going to happen in there, it's just when, with the amount of traffic. I think you'd agree that safety is a priority for everyone. You know, I don't know if anyone remembers back earlier in the year, unfortunately, the news channel was in there for the wrong reason when there was a possible child abduction. Well, that, that was my son. Thankfully, he was smart enough to run the other way. I'm not saying that, it could have been someone that lived in there. You know, still haven't caught him, that, you know, it may never, and hopefully, they never catch him in the act. You know, with that being said, I think just limiting the amount of people that come through there that don't live in there, I mean, I, I saw a couple of people that I know coming up here that I know don't live in, that live in the back of our subdivision cutting through, so I'm not saying that we're, they're seeing people that they know in the subdivision, but we're definitely for, you know, gating the community.
I agree.
Anything you want to add?
Well, not only is it about the safety, but, you know, limiting the number of cars that come through that do not live there, or at least having some way to log the cars that do come through, you know, might limit the crime as well. I'm not saying that it wouldn't happen within a gated community, but limiting the access that people do have to our subdivision would, I think it would definitely help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, next speaker is Jean Steinbach.
Good evening. I'm Jean Steinbach, and I live at 985 Autumn Close in Crooked Creek. I'm in favor of gating, so is my husband, and really, the reason is for safety. We've lived in Crooked Creek for almost 14 years, so like some of the others, we've actually seen it get worse and worse and worse. I've personally experienced at least twice... I've personally experienced at least twice now over the last year where I've been going the speed limit and someone actually passed me to get going faster to leave the neighborhood. In addition to the amount of cars and the speed, also the amount of break-ins has really increased as well. And so we are in favor of it, and we thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, we have then two other cards. Paul, sorry, I don't know how to pronounce the last name, P-E-L-A-E-Z, does not wish to speak, but does want to have his support read, that he's in support into the record. And the final comment, and I'm going to spell this one as well, out of respect for me not trying to pronounce it. First name, S-U-R-E-K-H-A, last name, B-A-C-A-J-I, from 335 Majestic Cove in Milton, wants these comments read into the record. I am in support of this agenda item to ensure the safety of the kids in our neighborhood by avoiding speeding cars on our roads. And that would be the extent of the comments in support. Roughly, we were at 15 minutes or so, three countdowns of the timer. We have now those speaking in opposition. The first one, Lori, is it Winn or Winnie? Winn, Lori Winn.
Good evening. My name is Lori Winn. I live at 14480 Creek Club Drive, directly in the middle of the neighborhood on the thoroughfare. We're right by the lake. We've lived there for six years. We're very happy in Crooked Creek, but we are against gating the neighborhood. I don't believe that the traffic studies that have been done are a true count of the number of vehicles that actually live in the neighborhood. We have over 600 homes, and the cars that go through the neighborhood are the residents. The people that are speeding are the residents. The people that are having accidents in the neighborhood are the residents. I don't think that gating is actually going to stop it. Very rarely, when I approach my home from either end of the neighborhood, do I actually tail a car all the way through. They usually turn off. We're a big neighborhood, the biggest neighborhood in Fulton County, and so we are going to have a lot of action in there. I don't think that gating is going to stop the speeding, nor do I think it's going to make it any safer as far as burglary. We still have to open it up for service vehicles. We know that service vehicles are a big ploy for criminals. One thing that has not been addressed in the... That I feel in all the meetings is the amount of traffic that is generated for our tennis clubs and the swim clubs. They're still going to have to open up that gate to allow everyone access to it. If they don't, then Highway 9 will be backed up, and then we're really going to be public enemy number one. I also don't think that people that were against the gating were properly represented. We were asked just to sign if you were in favor of it. We didn't have a vote... We didn't have a voice if we weren't in favor of it, and that's why they had so many meetings. That's why they sent so many emails. Then they sent letters. Then they had people go door to door because they didn't think that we knew about the gating. We did, we just didn't have a voice to say no. There were people who also looked at the amount of money that they thought it would take to maintain the roads and felt that that was not enough money. They're increasing our HOAs by $540 a year. That's not going to be enough. We're going to have to pay more to maintain seven miles of road. That is... Those are some of my main points. I please take it into consideration. I know I'm a minority here tonight. I thought it was going to be the exact opposite, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chris?
Mr. Mayor, the next, Michelle, I'm bad with this last name. Is it Thielen? Michelle.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Thielen. I live at 3380 Wolf Willow Close in Crooked Creek. I am against the gating project. I believe, as Ms. Winn said, it's going to cost a lot more than they are estimating. They didn't take into consideration the cost of the sidewalks maintenance. In the presentation that they gave, there were a lot of things that were left off. Our board is all people that are for gating, and so like Ms. Winn said, we didn't have a voice to speak up when we were against it. Nobody wanted to hear our voice. I believe that speed tables will take care of our problem of speeding through the neighborhood and cut-throughs. And the other issue that I believe will help the situation is something that I think needed to be done long ago, which is the widening of Highway 9 going all the way up. The traffic and the populations are such that it should have been done or it should be on the agenda to do very soon, and I think that'll alleviate the cut-through traffic. We have stop signs, and I guess what people don't understand is if we gate the subdivision, the police won't be able to patrol things like people not stopping at stop signs or speeding. And that will become more of a problem, even though there are people in our neighborhood and they do it. And finally, I bought a house 11 years ago in a neighborhood that was not gated because I wanted a house that was not gated. I didn't want the extra expense of gating in my neighborhood, and I don't feel that it's fair to change my rules because someone wants to gate. It's never been done before in Georgia. Why? Because it's not a good idea. And to my knowledge, most of the people get rid of their gates in neighborhoods instead of add gates. I just don't feel like it's fair to me as a homeowner that bought 11 years ago, and all of a sudden now I have to pay a minimum of $540 more per year for something I don't want, and I didn't buy it. And finally, I don't... We don't have a gate around the whole neighborhood, so a gate on the streets is not going to help me at all. I live on the golf course or right off the golf course. People can walk in from anywhere and do whatever they're going to do if they're going to rob my house or anything. That's not going to help the situation at all. And... But that's all I have to say. I'm against it, and I hope you take those things into consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the final in opposition wants to be read into the record. This is from Maria Daly at 14495 Eighteenth Fairway, and her comments are, "Don't care about gates a resident for 10 years." And that's all the public comment cards that we have.
All right, I'll close the hearing. Is there any questions, counsel, to any of our staff or anyone else on this issue for tonight?
I did have one question. My question's concerning the police being able to patrol the subdivision and the stop signs. They're still able to patrol even though it's private streets. I was told that they were not allowed to give...
I think I can answer. I think I can answer the question for you.
Larry, City Manager, he can answer.
You know, it would turn into private property, so the police would have limited enforcement authority. And so there's really no answer as to yes or no. The police would still be able to patrol and still be able to respond to calls for service. There are certain traffic offenses that they would be able to cite and certain ones they would not. The more common ones that you're all familiar with, which is running stop signs or speeding or things like that, those would not be enforceable on private property, simply as they're not enforceable in a parking lot today. But those more serious traffic offenses, DUI, anything that would deal with vehicular homicide, reckless driving, any of those types of things are citable on private property. So to answer your questions, they would lose some of their day-to-day, more minor traffic enforcement ability, but they wouldn't lose it all entirely.
Yeah, I'll take that question. One more step if you don't mind, City Manager. What would the protocol be? Would our officers still patrol that, those roads as they do now, or less, or certainly not more?
You know, it's been a couple of years since I've been immersed in the policing world, but I can tell you that, you know, to the extent that they get calls for service, that obviously go to that. Their ability to patrol is typically to look for other criminal behavior that they can intercept or intervene with. Would they sit on the dam at this point? If the roads were re-privatized, could they sit on the dam and run laser enforcement? The answer to that is no. So, you know, they wouldn't spend a lot of time doing something that they couldn't be effective doing. But I would think that you would still see regular routine patrols and obviously still calls for service responded to with targeted enforcement if you can figure out how to target those things with which they can cite.
Anybody else? Any questions?
Carter, on the six, you said you'll have more of a formal staff component to this hearing?
Yes, sir. At that time, we'll present our staff memo and recommendations.
Okay.
I have a question.
Mayor?
In those recommendations, do you also look at, you know, funding that Crooked Creek may be responsible for to maintain the roads from our perspective versus theirs?
We will. We'll give you a history of what projects that we've completed within the subdivision over the last five years, as well as some of those that may be programmed over the next five years from a paving standpoint.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, thank you very much. Chris, do you want to call the next item?
Mr. Mayor was moved and flopped with that one as consideration of an ordinance, the mayor and the council of the City of Milton, Georgia, to adopt the fiscal 2015 budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, appropriating the amounts shown in each budget as expenditures, appropriating the several items of appropriate anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding. That's... This is agenda item tonight, Mayor, 14249. It was discussed at the August 11, 2014 council work session, as well as the August 23 special call work session, and it is in first presentation at September 8, regular council meeting. This is a public hearing on the budget. I'll give you highlights of the budget tonight, sufficient that we have held a public hearing and then allow you to ask whatever questions that you might want to ask with respect to the budget. We did work on the budget, I'll remind you, in work session. The maintenance and operating budget has remained largely unchanged. We honed in a couple of things that we actually got more precise numbers on since that work session, but if you would allow me, I can tell you that the total budget this year is balanced at $24,386,240. When we put the budget together, we looked towards three priorities and factors, and that was the sustainability of existing services, maintaining the quality of life for constituents, citizens, and businesses through capital programming, enhancement to services through operating initiatives. So as we have in each year, we've put together what we believe maintains the city moving in its current direction through a maintenance and operating budget. That has been done this year. This budget contemplates a mill of 4.731. We spent a lot of time then spending priority discussions and making decisions on operating initiatives that make sense to bring forward as new initiative, as well as our capital planning. We're going to spend a little bit of time later tonight talking about the capital plan as it's changed since the work session, in line with what you asked us to do. But I can tell you that if you'd allow me to just highlight some of the initiatives that we're requesting this year and then talk globally about capital projects, we'll see if you have any questions for a public hearing, I guess. One of the things that's contemplated this year is some staffing enhancements, and those are two in the police department, one in the communications department, and one in the public works department. In the police department, it would increase the uniform patrol staffing by two police officers. There was an initial request for five, and the data would make us look that in future years, we should still try to drive to that number, but in this year, what's in the budget is two. I'm recommending this year that we really, really, really enhance our communications department, even enhance it to the point that we might find a better name to put on it. But if we're going to be successful into the future, as we interact with people in ways that they want to be interacted with, as we explore this whole media world of social media and other things, I think it's appropriate that we look towards enhancing our staffing in the communications department. And it'll allow us as well to bring more events online as we start to build facilities and have uses for them. We'll be able to start bringing special events online that we haven't prior, been able to do prior to that position being funded. One of the other things that we'd request in a way of an initiative is an enhancement in the public works department in the form of a capital projects manager. As you can see, it's no shock that Milton, we finally are taking plans and making progress by building things, and I don't see that slowing down anytime in the future as we look towards our capital budget. In fact, I think it only gets bigger and better. But those projects take a lot of oversight and a lot of work. And to get them right, we need to be able to put somebody that can do that, just that thing. That can be the oversight of the Bell Memorial Park, can be the oversight of the pavement management in Milton every year, the dam repair, the sidewalk replacement, and the parking lot replacement. They can be that person that makes sure that the capital project of a new city hall facility comes through for us. And I really think that there's a sufficient need, and there's a sufficient ongoing and recurring need that we can benefit from that enhancement in the public works department. One of the other major initiatives that we pursue this year is the transformation of our technology infrastructure into a cloud-based deployment that will help with not only our efficiency on the ground, but will also help with our disaster recovery and any other type of, I guess, time of crisis that we would need to be able to get to our information. It would be simply as close as being available to an internet connection as opposed to having servers placed in buildings and connections having to be made. It's taking our technology from what today is, we're reasonable with our technology deployment. I think we can get better, and I think this puts us right on that cutting edge of where we should be in 2014, 2015. In addition to that, as far... With respect to employees and with respect to this budget, I'm requesting that you consider, as you've considered in prior years, a 2.5% cost of living adjustment for city employees that is keeping us competitive and within the drive of the market. We also did a pay and classification study this year, which showed that we were lagging according to the market in a couple of key positions and a couple of key pay grades. Rather than deal with those collectively or entirely as a city, we tried to pull those out and focus on them individually so that we could adjust and make recommendations to adjust a couple that we feel need to be adjusted so that we can remain competitive in the marketplace. We had a decent year as far as renegotiating our benefit package for employees. We started with a percentage that was very high in healthcare renewal. We were able to, through some plan design changes and through some structuring of different deductibles and things, put together a plan that instead of increase 31% or 32%, which was what was proposed, actually shows healthcare costs increasing 5%. And considering the fact that the new Affordable Care Act requires some certain things that hasn't been required in previous years, 5% is actually a very, very, very good number, considering the fact that we've kind of been told, and I believe that there are certain requirements now that are new, that could have caused it to increase 7% just in itself. So that is in there, and I believe, having met with employees last week, I held five meetings with employees last week and talked about the budget, I think that this maintains us in a strong position to not only recruit well, but more importantly, retain well. Because once we have people that are performing well and are that face for us out in the community, there's value in keeping them here. There's also extreme value in turnover. So if we can keep good talent here, that's something that we want to look to do as well. If you'd allow me now to take you to the capital projects budget and give you some highlights as to what is funded in that, I can tell you that the plan that we're showing you this year is a seven-year plan, it's a bit different than you've seen in prior years. It combines not only the capital plan that you've seen in the past, but also the capital grant fund, and it puts it into one document, so it's easy to... Easier, I guess, to read and filter through. We've also targeted our funding of this capital plan to a certain dollar figure that we believe is very doable as a transfer out from the general fund based upon some of the direction of the council at the work session, as well as the amending of the fund balance policy. What I can tell you is that we took a different look at this, and we put it through the lens of how could we fund things when projects were ready to be built as opposed to funding like we had presented early on, which essentially showed more of a cash banking plan to make sure that when we went to construction, we were able to build with cash. This does largely the same thing. It just kind of targets that funding to occur in the year when it needs to occur. This plan contemplates that Bell Memorial Park will not only be completed with its construction, but will also be opened and operated. And I know that's an important factor when you build a park, is to make sure that you can get it open. This contemplates a city hall build in 2017, and as you can see in the first line there, that shows a complete fund. You can see that we were able to, in the public safety communications, if you're looking at this forum, we were able to reduce a half million out of that project, being able to earmark some of the funds in the 911 fund to this project, as well as the $100,000 that we saved because of a bid award that ended up less than we anticipated. We're able to take a half million dollars out of that, as we've done in every year to fund a vehicle replacement reserve based upon a depreciation of our current assets. You can see that we programmed some design funding for police in a court facility in 2016, pushed construction out to match when we will be leaving this building in 2019 and 2020. You can see in the fire department, we've added some things that we think are... Do repairs at our existing assets, as well as look at our assets that are sort of at end... as well as look at our assets that are sort of at end of life, being Fire Station Forty-two, and prioritize it higher than a new building construction, which I think is what we heard at the work session, that we should take care and maintain that asset or replace it with a, with a better asset. Rather than trying to Band-Aid it, we should do that before we go to building new assets. Highlighting in, in the public works area of the capital improvement plan, you'll see that there's pavement management in there, just like there is every year. There's some sidewalks in there. The important thing is that there's also intersection improvements. And there's intersection improvements that prioritize what we believe are the right order for the intersections to be looked at, and it keeps that intersection in either construction or planning like we've talked about. And it would fund this year's fund, this year's funding of this plan would allow the moving forward of Hopewell and Birmingham Road into construction. It would also have us start to study Freemanville and Providence and Freemanville and Birmingham Road. I have to picture those in my head. What we did by putting the roundabout in at Hopewell Francis Cogburn is to push the traffic problem north. So rather than trying to do one intersection in study, we'd like to study those two together because we fear that if we fix one of the two, we will push the problem to the other one. So it seems to make sense that the lesson learned at our Hopewell Francis Cogburn is to, if we're going to put them in sequence like that, is to put them together at the same time. Other than that, there's, you know, some, some good community programs that are, that are funded in here. Everybody loves sidewalks, and there's a streetscape project that's funded. There's some sidewalk dollars funded. There's a pedestrian lighting project funded on Green Road in its entirety. So we would be able to move forward with incorporating that Green Road area into the same style and design as the streetlights that exist that front Crabapple Road and kind of bookend that Crabapple overlay area. And I think that was the direction that she wanted us to go. This looks towards some web road turn lanes as well as some bridge replacements. And as we talked in the work session, we look towards studying and replacing the three bridges across the top of the city on Birmingham Road before we pave that road. And if you drive that road, you know that it's in need of repair. It seems foolish to repair it without repairing the bridges that we would pave over top of first. So we've started to put those types of projects in. And then you can see, as we look out into the future, we've identified the intersection projects that would receive, receive design and construction funding into the future, and that's Hopewell at Hamby, Hopewell at Thompson. We eventually start to look at a Crabapple southeast connector. I forgot to highlight, and I should have, that this shows also a design as well as future construction of what we call a Crabapple northeast connector, which would be the one that would be opposite the northwest connector. Yeah. And that would be, that would be the one that we connect the roundabout on Birmingham Highway to Charlotte Road, to where the library is. And that community has come to us and said they're ready for us to do that project if we could bring some design to the table. So we're going to start by looking at that this year as well. We're going to have plenty of opportunity to go into the nuts and bolts of this plan later tonight in the meeting if you want. For the purposes of the public hearing, though, I think that's sufficient highlight of the budget to let you know what the dollar figure is, where it's balanced, and where the priorities of the city are, at least as it's presented. I'm happy to answer any questions you have or highlight anything further if you think more is needed on any areas of the public hearing.
Any questions, Ken?
Yeah, I just have one quick question. The money for the transportation master plan update is in here for next year, still correct?
It is, yes. I'm sorry I didn't highlight that.
And I'm assuming these intersections in the order that they're done and all might change depending on whatever that transportation master plan update tells us needs to be done.
They very well might. That's correct. We've built the budget based upon the data that we have today.
Right.
And that our professional staff has some idea based, based upon traffic flow, what, what needs work. But you are correct.
Yeah. You change one intersection, you're right, it doesn't affect other intersections.
Yes, it did.
Sometimes you don't.
Kicks the can down the road.
Yeah. Sometimes you're not sure which direction the can is being kicked, but you know, we have some flexibility going forward of moving these around based on what we determine is the, the need.
You've got all the flexibility in the world to change it even mid-year if you want to. If our priorities change tomorrow, we have the flexibility to align the priority with the file.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one comment tonight, if you're ready for that.
I am. Ziva has had a question for Chris before comments.
Okay. One comment tonight is from Jack Linden.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Jack Linden at fourteen eight ten East Bluff Road in Milton. I, I wanted to start by thanking Stacy for sending me a copy of the, of the budget tonight. So I was able to take a look at that before the public hearing. I, I don't really have any, I wasn't sure whether to put myself down as in opposition or approval, but I have a concern. And that is that I don't believe there's anything in the, in the capital budget regarding the potential purchase of conservation easements or land or any money that might be required for conservation subdivisions, any of the sort of things we're talking about that could help with the development issues in the town. So, and, and I guess that makes sense because at this point, we don't know what the plan is. We don't know what the targets are, so it's a little hard to figure out what the plan is going to be when you don't know where you're headed. We're going to find out some more about where we're headed at the end of the month when our consultant comes in with a green print plan. I guess that's on the twenty-third. Is that right? I think I'm right about that. And that's two days after you're going to approve the budget. So I'm not sure that anything could be done about it at this point anyway. But I'm concerned that you think about how any of those kinds of funds are going to be handled. Is there a way that the city can raise the money for buying conservation easements, for example? If that's one of the things that the consultant recommends. I don't know what the way, how, how that's going to handle. We already, we just heard from the, the city manager that we have a seven-year plan for capital improvements, and I hope we don't wait seven years before we start doing something about the conservation issues. So that's my comment. I would like to, hope that you consider that when you're considering the budget issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Love to respond. Love your response. Yeah, yeah. No, Jack, those are great comments. And you're, you're right about the timing. The nice thing, just like I mentioned to Karen, that this is amendable at any time, so is the budget amendable that once we identify something like that that needs funding, it can easily get brought in, and it doesn't have to wait seven years. The thing I'm a little bit cautious about at this point in not demonstrating a line item like that in a current budget as you adopt it is Ken and I are still working through a process by which we would use our money to do any of those things and make sure that we're not creating a conflict or offering a gratuity to somebody that we wouldn't be offering to everybody. So rather than ask you all by ordinance to adopt a budget that I'm not comfortable I'd be recommending something, the right thing in, I want to make sure that we have the right answer first, and then we make the recommendation to put it in the budget.
Is there any more public comment?
Hang on just one second. These are all two different items?
Okay. That's the only public comment.
Okay. The public, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any more discussion on this or questions? Nope. Okay.
The only comment I can make is, I mean, I agree with Jack's point on that and that we can make, so long as we're flexible with, with these projects as they come by. I think that makes the most sense. You know, we, we can only plan for what we can foresee, but we also can't set money aside that doesn't have a use just yet because we don't know what that use technically specifically is, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. What I'm saying is I want to make sure that as I put it in the budget, it's for a purpose that we can actually, number one, fulfill. Number two, that once we fulfill it, that it's legal. Because there's been some talk about whether or not the purchase of conservation easements is the right thing to do or incentivizing others to try to move their property into a conservation easement. Those are two totally different things. One actually would have us holding an easement. The second would be incentivizing somebody to do it themselves through like a land trust, for example. But I want to make sure that before we offer incentive, incentive is an okay word in circum, circumstances, but it's also a very dangerous word in certain circumstances because it could be, could the possibility of offering one landowner a gratuity to do something to their property that we wouldn't offer to everybody, and that becomes illegal. So, you know, we're, we're, yes, we are optimistic that we will find the right fit for Milton and we'll fund the right fit once we find it. But Jack was correct. That green print is coming in, in a couple of weeks. But that, you know, we're on a certain calendar. We have to get a budget adopted, but that doesn't mean that that can't be the First Amendment.
Right. And our, as our land conservation consultant, you have been consulted on that?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And that's why we, that's why we're drawing Ken into the, Ken into the mix here because, you know, we, she and I can create incentives all day long and how we would go ask people to do this only to find out that, you know, and hypothetically, we say, let's say, up to five thousand dollars of incentive to pay for a survey and pay for an appraisal and pay for the upfront work that would land somebody into a conservation easement. That sounds great, but is illegal. So that's what we're working through right now. And we'll, this process will evolve, and we'll have a good answer for you. But that's the reason it's not in, but there's no, like I said, there's no reason it can't be the First Amendment.
Sure.
To the budget, not the First Amendment.
All right. City manager, please call the next time.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The item we have in new business now is consideration of a waiver regarding dual representation of Forsyth County and the city of Milton related to CP thirteen zero zero one four. It's agenda item number fourteen two five zero. On this, Mr. Mayor, we do have four speaker cards that would like to speak. It's, I'll leave it to you as to whether or not you want to. Okay. So, so we do have some public comment. If you want to hear that before the item's presented, or if you'd like to hear it presented first, that's up to you.
Let's hear the public comment first.
Okay. We'll hear the public comment first. The first comment comes from Ken Bauer.
Good evening. I'm Ken Bauer. I live at, excuse me, one five two zero five Sandpoint Trace in, in Milton. And I'm aware that Mr. Gerard is not only counsel for the city of Milton, but also for Forsyth County. And that's evidently what this has to do with. But I'm wondering if there could be in non-legalese fashion, an explanation of just exactly what's going on here. I think this is probably tied in with the advanced disposal project going on up the road and perhaps an, an example of how this might, might come into play. Obviously, if there should be some sort of legal, legal action involving the project up there, it certainly would seem to be a conflict of interest for Mr. Gerard to represent both Milton and, and Forsyth County in this. I believe that Forsyth County also has this item as an agenda for their own council. And anyway, perhaps a further explanation of, of what's, what's the objective here would, would make us feel, feel more comfortable. It certainly does not seem that, that he can represent both if there's, if something, something comes. I also have a couple of general remarks on the, on the project up there. If you wanted to do that at a, at a different time, or shall I go ahead while I'm here?
I don't know. It's not.
I would go ahead and take it.
Okay. Maybe you want to go ahead.
Okay. The, as I believe counsel is, is aware, advanced disposal is planning on expanding a, an existing recycling facility on surely industrial way. This backs up to the subdivision in which, in which we live. I believe that counsel here had given at least some consideration to perhaps sending a letter to Forsyth County that maybe they should kind of rethink some of this. I wanted to bring to your attention that in both the so-called public impact report, which is, I have a copy of it here, and also the staff report from Forsyth County, that they have made reference to a joint property adjoining the facility up there is, is zoned A1 and, and there's nothing there and so on and so forth. I can sit on the deck of one of the houses in our subdivision and look up there and see this facility. So it's adjacent to residential property that I believe is zoned R4 where we are. And when the leaves are off the trees, the, the, it's going to be the same vision up there. And more noise and, and that sort of thing. And that's, at this point, that's my comments on, on, on that project. And a, there are a number of us who are in hopes that Forsyth County will not, in fact, approve the, the project there as it's, as is projected. And I would encourage counsel here to continue to consider and perhaps go ahead and send some sort of a notification to Forsyth County that you're in fact at least supporting Milton taxpayers and, and voters here on, on this matter, that maybe it should receive some further consideration.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. And as we don't discuss during comments, after a public comment, we can make, we can ask questions and have a discussion.
Sure.
Some of these items. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just need to ask, I've got two cards from Dawn Cushing. One indicated she wants to speak and the other not. Okay.
I'm Dawn Cushing. I live at thirty-three fifty-five, okay, that's a little too much, thirty-three fifty-five Plantation Trace. I am a Milton resident. The first card that you have is my opposition on Mr. Gerard being representative of city of Milton and Forsyth County in related, in relation to this cup. I feel like this is a conflict of interest. I feel that Forsyth County and the city of Milton are approaching this cup from two different points of view. For Forsyth County, this is a revenue generator as well as a place to dump their waste. Whereas in the city of Milton, this issue has no benefits to us. Instead, citizens in the city of Milton are looking at a negative impact with loss of property values and environmental impacts. So I do not see that Mr. Gerard can have a unbiased view when we're coming from two different viewpoints. And then my other comment was one that just needed to be entered into the record.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I've got then two I'll read into the record, and that will be it for the night. The second one is from Dawn Cushing, and she says, "I'm opposed to permit application CP one three zero zero one four by advanced disposal in Forsyth County and request the mayor of city of Milton issue a formal statement opposing this as well." And our final comment is from Rosemary Nelson from fifteen one seven zero Sandpoint Trace in Milton, Georgia. "My home neighborhood backs up to advanced disposal. I am very much opposed to their permit application CP one three zero zero one four to expand their facility. I would like to ask the mayor and city of Milton to oppose this as well since their plans to expand will very negatively affect residents, businesses, and the quality of life of many in Milton." Those are the comments that I have.
Okay. Carter, does that look like, do we have another comment? Are we going to have another comment?
No, that's not it, sir.
Okay. All right. Then I will close the, the public hearing on this. Before we get started, in, in more of a lay term, I'd like to ask, ask our city attorney to discuss this, this issue just in a very general basis. Our city attorney represents obviously us with the, with the city of Milton's business as well as, as Forsyth County. So very rarely, if there is something that there's an issue in both the county and, and the city, we'll, we'll do a waiver like this. That being said, at least at this point, my understanding, there's no, the city attorney's here to advise us legally on any decision we make. It's not helping to make a, to take a stand from the city of Milton versus what maybe in Forsyth County. But that being said, Ken, I'll let you explain.
Mr. Mayor, the comments by those citizens are, are well taken. And I understand, I mean, my law firm represents multiple governmental jurisdictions, and occasionally they have interests that either overlap. And so, you know, just as a matter of course, whenever I see two of my jurisdictions that have anything that even sounds like it's the same, this is just my, my reaction is to come and bring a conflict waiver. It's not because in this case I think there's a conflict, but I want to explain why that is. At this point, first of all, Forsyth County has not taken a position on this cup application at all. It's still pending, and we won't know what Forsyth County's position is on it until the cup is either approved or denied. The same goes for the city of Milton. At this point, there is no city of Milton position on this yet. So candidly, there's not even an adversity of interest between my two clients at this point. Again, this is something that I do out of an abundance of caution. Number one, to put on the record that I, A, I have identified this issue to bring it out loud. And candidly, to the extent that citizens are aware of it, that, that's great. That's one of the reasons we do this out loud is so individuals can come and say, "Listen, I'm aware of this." So, you know, to some extent, mission accomplished. Secondly, is to put you on notice that it's out there as well, that it could in fact become adverse at some point. I'm not precisely sure how it would become. I am asking for the council to approve this resolution this evening, but I will hopefully give the council and these citizens some comfort. If I believe that there was any divergence of position by the two governments, for instance, if Milton took an adverse position to Forsyth County, I would get out of both representing Forsyth County on that issue, and I would get out of representing the City of Milton on that issue. And I would recommend a recommendation to the city manager that a new council or a new attorney be brought in. A lawyer cannot be on both sides of litigation. That is an unwavable conflict. So I just want to make sure everyone is aware of that. In no instance would I ever say, "I would like you to waive it so I can be the plaintiff defendant." I mean, it doesn't work that way. And I could not do that. And I wouldn't ask that of the council.
I would just add, too, on the council, recommend the city manager, as well as the council, if we were going in any direction where there was going to be a position, you know, different from our side versus, you know, Forsyth County's side, we have the right to bring in an outside legal firm. We've got folks that are on auto dial whenever we have something. If it needs to come out of our, you know, our permanent city attorneys.
And given that I do this in a lot of jurisdictions, I can assure the council, and I hope that the city manager will acknowledge this is true, I would be the first to recommend that that occur. Because... But again, this is sort of just a cautionary measure. At this point, there's no adversity at all. But if there is, if there is a literal situation where the city council wants to take an aggressive position with Forsyth County in an adversarial way with respect to this, I won't be able to handle that.
But clarify that, too. At this point, moving forward, we have the option of taking a position. Or we're giving a... Basically, taking a position and a recommendation.
Yes.
But it's not necessarily an adversarial against the county. It's we're going to give our opinion of what we think is right, based on the City of Milton.
That's correct.
So...
That's correct. I don't view that as adversarial. That can be informational, and that can even be, "We'd like you to consider these things," but that's not adversarial. And it's going to be challenging for there to be adversity just because of the various roles the two jurisdictions play with respect to zoning.
Sure.
So basically, this is just putting us on notice. So if it did become something later, you wouldn't say, "Oh, I can't do that. It's the 11th hour." You're telling us right now that, hey, if it comes to something, there may be something I need to back out on.
That's right. That's right. I mean, I am asking you to waive any apparent conflict, but there's no actual conflict at all right now. There just isn't any.
Matt, name Karen?
Yeah, my... I mean, my thought, obviously, we don't... No one has a position yet. I mean, we're hearing from both sides of the issues, those who are and those who are against. And that's why we have delayed on that. My concern is, is that if there ever was any kind of... Any kind of anything of position that we would take, then ultimately, we made a decision as far as what that is, and then we may have to change at that point in time.
Sure.
I'm not so sure as it makes sense to say yes to this right now, even though it may never be an issue. Does that make sense? It's just, you know, it may be something you never have to advise us on, depending on what we do. But I just... I get concerned that if we start drafting a letter, that very act of putting pen to paper is beginning a position that we, as a city, are taking. And that's just my concern.
I understand.
Karen?
And I kind of agree with Matt. I don't really believe there's any conflict of interest at all. I don't want there to be any appearance of possible conflict of interest. It's my whole thing is, you know... Clearly, we're not voting on this. This is their thing. All we're doing is expressing maybe our opinion, and they can vote however they want to. It's... But I don't want there to be any appearance of there being any kind of conflict with the situation, even though I don't believe there ever really... Unless we got in a legal battle between the two, the county and the city, there could ever be a true conflict. I don't want there to be an appearance of one.
I understand.
Asking... I mean, could we be safe to say to take everything into consideration and any concerns, as well as these points? At this point, you're not doing anything with us on this as far as, you know, we could go ahead and discuss tonight that if we were to get to a point where we need legal counsel on this issue, that we would just go to an outside attorney? Would that... Would that work?
Sure. Absolutely. That's the will of the council. That's perfectly fine.
I mean, at this point, you're just bringing this up as... To make us aware of it.
Well, I was asking for this resolution to be adopted, but if the council has concerns, I will yield to the discretion of the council, and you can just not take action on this. I fully respect that.
Where does that leave us?
Yeah.
That would leave me recommending to city manager that, to the extent he needs guidance or instruction with respect to this conditional use permit and the approach that Milton takes with Forsyth County, that we would need to bring in another lawyer.
You're saying...
Now, to the extent that we will need to or decide to take action on this, it'll come in the form of a resolution, I would think. I mean, I don't try to forecast the future. I don't, you know, I don't think this is litigation-worthy at this point. But, I mean, it would be Forsyth using their discretion that they have as an elected body to make a land use decision. But we would potentially be putting our views on the record in the form of a resolution if you all decide to do that. That would need a modest level of legal advice, but it would need some.
Right.
To make sure that we were making a recommendation that was based upon sound land use principles or sound discretion of the council.
Because to me, as we're just moving forward in day-to-day business, there's no conflict in, you know, we need to... Now, if it's to craft a resolution saying that the... Say that the resolution was totally against maybe what Forsyth County was doing, then I could see a conflict. But...
Right.
So is there a way to do this, that we don't necessarily spend more money and bring somebody else in unless we need to? If we pass this ordinance, but then if we get to a point where we do a resolution that...
It looks to me like what the city's grappling with is, is you're not sure exactly when you're going to formulate your position on this conditional use permit. And I think your concern is by the time...
Or what that position is going to be.
Right. And by the time you do that, you're not... You're not sure what practically that looks like with respect to my involvement. So my recommendation to you, as your attorney, is not to adopt this resolution, if that's a concern. And let's just wait. And when Milton begins to develop its position, then Chris, or the mayor, or the council can consult, if they need legal counsel, with someone other than me.
And they still want nothing that's adversarial until after their decision is made in Forsyth County.
That's right. But to the extent you're struggling with this, you don't need to. You shouldn't be in that position at all. If you're struggling with it, you need to feel comfortable that whatever counsel you're giving does two things: gives you good legal advice and instills confidence in the citizenry. And if you can't meet both those objectives, then you need to get someone else. So I'm very comfortable with that.
Okay. And then the other thing, as far as timing or whatnot, even considering the position or not, or as this discussion's been going on, Chris, can you... This thing has moved forward or further out on Forsyth County's timeline, too. When... Do you know when that will be actually coming to their commission?
You know, the opportunity, I understand, for public comment is during the Planning Commission, which has been moved at this point to October. But it was, you know, that could very well be November, December. So we're watching the timing of it. But if... I don't know how Forsyth County scheduling works, but if it makes it to the Planning Commission in October, it would likely make it to the Board of Commissioners in November.
Right.
And is the Board of Commissioners where we would probably... If we had a resolution or...
Where would we run then?
Would we submit it to the Board of Commissioners?
I believe that we probably, if we're going to form an opinion, we probably should form it before it goes to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Because that's the opportunity, as I understand it, in Forsyth County's government, that's the opportunity to bring not only a resolution forward, but also speak on it.
Okay.
And that's in October right now, as it stands.
Yep.
And I'm working, as you know, and as you've directed, to work with the company to hold a public meeting in Milton.
For citizens and residents, right.
And as I think I've reported to you, Forsyth declined participating in that meeting. So now I'm really kind of waiting on Advanced to move forward and host a meeting, whether it's informational, whether it's a yell-at session. We'll only have to see what that turns into when it happens.
And we don't have an update at this point from them on their openness to do that, or...
The feedback that I've gotten is that they are willing to do it, but I have not gotten any feedback beyond that. So it's easy to say I will do something. The hard part comes with the when and the how and the place and all the stuff. So that's a topic that I'll be re-immersed in later this week.
Quick question procedurally. Got a citizen with a public question or comment, but procedurally, how would best way to handle that?
Is it relevant to this topic?
Oh, as far as another public comment?
Right now, yeah.
I think that's purely in the council's discretion if they want to hear some additional comment.
Got a citizen with their hand up. Is the council like to allow public comment on that?
That's this one.
It's not comments, but just a question. Who in Forsyth County is refusing to have the public forum here in the City of Milton?
They're not right now.
Okay, yeah, I'd be happy to. That was just a request of the county staff. That's not a county-elected officials. It's like, you know, I...
And again, that's no negative reflection on them. It's... They're holding their process in Forsyth County, so it's almost unfair. You know, it'd be like someone asking us to take our staff and go hold a public meeting in another jurisdiction. It kind of puts them on the... It's awkward, so...
I wouldn't have done it. The table's been reversed, so I wouldn't have allowed it either.
Okay. So then we would...
Do we vote on this? Or do we...
I mean, I don't think... Well, I don't think so. I think the council is not inclined to adopt it, so I would just move on to the next agenda item. This can either stand open, or you could just simply ask that you make a motion that it be withdrawn.
Yeah.
I would recommend it be withdrawn.
Yeah. I just do it. Do I have a motion for to approve or withdraw?
Motion to withdraw this resolution.
Okay. You got a motion for withdrawal from Councilmember Moore, a second from Councilmember Hewitt. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Again, that's a no reflection on you or whatever. We're just trying to make sure you get it. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Mr. City Manager, I get back on... We'll go to staff reports.
Yes. Well, I... Mr. Mayor, we had somebody come in at the last minute who filled out a comment card who would like to speak on a topic that was not on any of the items tonight. Would you like to hear one more public comment, or...
Sure. It's what we're here for.
Robert Quinn.
Colonel Robert Quinn, retired, 13850 Cowat Road in wonderful City of Milton. I'm asking a specific issue that you've inherited as the City of Milton, and that's based upon the road closure of Cowat Road. It's been closed due to the fact of Milton Trail, and it's basically next to the Summit Hill Elementary School. I live on that street. We've had running incidents and discussions about this. I've brought this up in several years, about the barrier being closed for two main reasons. One is to keep a rural area of Milton. The other reason is basically because our wonderful city councilman and our state senator also lives on that street. The reason why they wanted the road closed is to keep buses from going into the brand-new school that was built, which is Summit Hill Elementary School. We had an incident last week where a young lady of 88 years of age, who was one of the founding members of this city years ago, went down. She lived right there on one side of the barrier. The first responders tried to come in and get to her and showed up on the other side of the barrier. Now, I've made complaints about the barrier to the city manager verbally. And the reason I'm here tonight is because at this particular point junction with the growth of Milton and the growth of the areas, I'd like to have an investigation to look at the first responders and how they would respond to, one, Summit Hill Elementary School, based upon where the firehouses are, and, two, the ability for them to be able to crash through the barrier. In other words, the barrier has only been up there basically to keep the school roads and keep traffic to a minimum for that neighborhood. But based upon what has happened with this young woman, who's now in the intensive care unit, and may die, I think that the response time from the fire department, we could have been shortened a lot more if that barrier was not there. I'd like to have the city do an investigation directly with the first responders of the fire department. I'd also like to get the comments of the first responders also on certain road closures in the Milton area, whether or not they've been part of lateral movement, or whether or not they can transgress any type of neighborhoods back and forth. I heard earlier you're going to close... There was a request to close one of the Crooked Creek, whatever. But has anyone ever done a study to see what the first responders and how they are affected, or maybe the special needs buses that transition those neighborhoods, and what that does to when you close down some of these roads? So I'm just asking out of a general comment and based upon what just occurred this past two weeks for the city to take a look at that and take a look at their overall plan of where they're closing the roads and how it's going to affect the neighborhoods. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Can I...
Keep comments, yeah. We'll be happy to take a look.
Can I make a request that we take a look?
You can.
Thank you.
Yes, no problem.
All right.
Okay. So I do have a couple of staff reports tonight. Just want to let you know, this is kind of a busy weekend, some stuff going on this week, because there's some stuff you all have been involved in, an assortment of different levels and different things. I want to let you know kind of where updates are. There is a meeting that is a follow-up meeting tomorrow with Commissioner Housman with some citizens of Milton who live north of the Elevated Water Tank on Freemanville Road, the four neighborhoods up there. And I was about to ask a question as to the privatization of neighborhoods and quality of water and whose water system it is. So we finally are to a point where we're going to follow back up with the commissioner and her staff tomorrow. So I want to let you know that, even though that one seems like it probably should be done and gone, is coming back up tomorrow. I do have a meeting with the county manager on Wednesday, as you know, to discuss apparently whatever action the Fulton County Commission took with Providence Park. I will be interested to hear what that action is. And I'm a bit concerned that I'm not going to hear what I want to hear, but that's okay. We'll just take all good information at this point and formulate our plan. I can tell you as well that that evening, after I try to get back from downtown, I think the mayor's going to be there, maybe Rick might be coming to sit in. There's a community meeting at the Bethwell Community Center with the owners, future owners of the new countryside pedestal that's there at the intersection with some neighbors in the area. So that certainly is a quote-unquote "public" meeting, but I haven't heard from a majority of the council that they plan on attending. At this point, it would be difficult if we had a quorum there. So if you just coordinate amongst yourselves that no more than three show if you want to come to that meeting. Thursday morning is 9/11, and at Milton High School, as has been customary over the years, at 7:45 a.m. will be a slight tribute. The flags will go out again, but some students in the police and fire department tonight before. So I also understand Cambridge is going to have their course, sing the National Anthem. I haven't heard any more that any more of an event is going on. You hate to single out one school and go one place and not go them both, but I haven't heard that there's really a public-type opportunity at Cambridge, so just update you on that. Crab Apple Community Association Thursday night at 6 o'clock has an amazing presenter.
I heard it, their own city manager?
Do you like that? You like that? Okay.
You don't want to miss it.
I'm just kidding. Now, that's at the old Blind Dog at 6 o'clock, if you plan on coming. And also want to let you know that we've received word back, because this was attended by many citizens as well. We've received word back from the Georgia Department of Transportation on their desire to hold a public community meeting about the Highway 9 project. attended by many citizens as well, we've received word back from the Georgia Department of Transportation on their desire to hold a public community meeting about the Highway Nine project, remember back a couple of weeks, we've been trying to get them to hold a meeting. I've taken the position at this point that they're back in design with that road, that it's so far out in the future, that they're back in design and they're listening to their designers, their architects, and all that good stuff, and they're interested at this point to hearing comment on an individual, one-on-one basis, and they're not interested in coming to a, more or less a community meeting where they would come here and have an opportunity to interact with multiple people at the same time. I can't make them do that, I suggested that that be our, that was our desire, obviously, but at this point, they've taken the position that they'd rather just communicate with the people individually on their comments and concerns, so if you have people that come to you that say they want to talk about the Highway Nine project, the Highway Nine widening and what's proposed by GDOT, we can definitely cause them to be connected with the right person, but if they're waiting on a meeting to happen here, GDOT has just politely at this point said they don't believe this is the right time.
Would you be able to give us that information, because I know some people in subdivisions off from Bethany Ben are definitely interested in hearing on updates or given, given comment?
Yep. We will email you the project manager's contact information.
And then, along the same line, have we heard, are there any updates with Georgia 400, McGinnis Ferry, is that even anything that's in consideration?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely, that's a, probably I could defer to Carter, but that's, that's lining up as a very real project.
It is.
I'm sorry, I'm jumping, but would you pipe on GDOT?
I only have one, I only have one report, so that's great, go ahead.
It is something that's moving forward from Forsyth County's perspective, it's one of the projects that was in, or at least coming up on one of their bond referendums, and we're watching that as it moves forward, we're participating in that process with them, and as it moves forward and the timing is right, we will come forward, or we will ask Forsyth County to come forward and bring a presentation to you to kind of go over the overall project scope of the project and potential impacts of the project.
And part of that, then you'll include really the impacts to our roadways as, as people use that for ingress or egress going out to, so that, that's the concern, I know, at least in my district, that's, could be a potentially large impact with the roadways around us.
And one of the key reasons why we want to try and stay involved in that project to the extent that we can, we would like for them to extend some of the limits of the projects, to take care of some of what we feel are going to be future impacts on some of the roads in this particular area, so we are trying to participate in that process as much as possible.
Okay, thank you.
You missed the mayor reports, or mayor and council reports.
Oh, Chris has still got.
Let me, I'll finish with them, yeah, absolutely, sorry, we've got a little order, the only other one I've got is we're going to talk about, after Matt's comments, we'll talk about this capital spreadsheet tonight, published it on the agenda tonight as a published staff report, partly because we've got several conflicts next week, I'm not going to be in town, the mayor's not going to be in town when we had the work session scheduled next week, somehow we inadvertently allowed Stacy to not be in town as well, so we're going to hopefully handle that discussion tonight. I do want to highlight, though, that there is still planned a joint meeting of the council with the Historic Preservation Commission at five o'clock, I've worked almost 120 days to get that one scheduled, so I hate to reschedule it because it might be another 120 days before we get it back on the calendar, so if you all are good with it, we'll still have a five o'clock, we just won't have a six o'clock, the meeting that we will have will be only the joint meeting, and so if you're good with that, I'll certainly defer to the council member, and then I'll talk a little bit about this capital spreadsheet.
Awesome, yeah, just a couple things, one, I saw the first tornado siren there on Birmingham Road, and I'm glad they're there, I know it's been a long time, but just something makes me feel really good about seeing that out there, I don't know if you guys have seen it or not, but it's just great seeing that. Two, the library is being constructed, I don't know if you saw that or not, but we've got some iron up there, and that thing's going to be huge, a lot bigger than I thought it was, so I'm just glad to see that. Want to congratulate Milton High School's football team for a big win over Norcross on Friday night, that was a two-time state champion that went down to Milton, so great job for, for, for the coach over there, and I believe all of our college teams are still undefeated, so I got to say that going in, so congratulations Auburn and Tech, and you waver between the front runner, so...
Notre Dame won 76 or something.
So, and Notre Dame just happened to have a shutout against Michigan, I just had to say that.
First, first one, I think, in series history.
Oh, a long time, long time, so, anyway, and you stole my thunder on the 9/11 deals, I want to congratulate Savannah Bailey, puts that one over on Milton High School, which is good, and, and again, I don't know what Cambridge is doing, but the, the 9/11 ceremony is definitely worth going, and thanks for the fire department for putting that together and the police and emergency personnel services, that's a big thing, you guys get a chance to go to that.
On, on the sirens, I, I've seen them, when are they going to get the meters and that speed functioning?
They're in the process now of just getting the power turned on to them, so the power will be turned on, there will be some testing to make sure that the connection to the Alpharetta Dispatch Center works, and then I would anticipate within the month we'll have it go live, and again, just a reminder on those, if you hear them, and they're, they're, they're never going to test them when there's a chance of rain, so if, if it looks like it's going to rain, or the forecast is for rain and you hear it, that's a real warning, if it's sunny out and it's Wednesday at noon, that's probably a test.
And we don't test them at 3:00 a.m. either?
We do not, and they do not have the ability to play music, even, even if we wanted them to.
No, we, once we know what that schedule is and we're ready to do that, are we going to put some, post something on the city website and maybe in the newspaper?
We'll put it out as much as we can put it out, we'll even try for some localized TV coverage on that, just to get the word out, because it's such a new thing, somebody's going to hear it for the first time, you say.
Right, yeah, they've already kind of done a little plug just for the fact that it was coming, but, yeah, we'll get the go-live out.
Good.
Anything else, council, anything else?
Just for a couple of minutes, I know we followed up at the last work session, and what I was going to bring back to you next week at the work session, if we had had one, was a different look at the capital plan, when we were together, and I kind of highlighted it when I talked earlier about our budget, we looked at it more through the lens, I think, that the council directed us to after the last work session, what I took away from that work session was fund projects as they need to be built, and we'll fund them over time in the hopes that sooner or later you'll actually get them built, I heard, built, I heard that as one. Two, as I heard, put focus on current assets and their repair prior to focusing on the construction of new assets. The other thing I heard was to make sure that this capital plan was realistic and that it could actually be funded, and one of the other things I heard is that we need to work on our fund balance policy, which came through our first presentation tonight, so that what we kept in reserve was a percentage of that, those dollars that were retained in the general fund and not those dollars that were retained, plus the dollars that are transferred out to the capital projects fund, so those were kind of the takeaways that we heard, I wish I could say I did a great job by then coming back to my office and figuring out how to make this happen, I can't say that, I can, I can tell you that between Carter and Stacy, they spent hours in this capital plan, and really kind of delivered a, a seven-year plan that number one is, is attainable, and that's important because we feel as though we haven't overinflated dollars, we haven't contemplated projects that we don't believe we can fund, we haven't contemplated projects that just have a big number attached to them that we think we can transfer money out of the general fund into the capital projects fund, and it, and it not happened, so what you're seeing as you start to go through this new spreadsheet, is you'll start to see projects that align with those four different priorities that I think the council provided us. One of those is in, you know, for example, is in the Station 42 replacement, whereas before, we had that prioritized out later after the 2020, 2021, after a new potential fire station build in what we're calling the West Side Fire Station, you can see now that priority has changed, and the asset that we currently exist, which is Station 42, is programmed for a design, kind of like a design concept location study in 2016 and then actual construction dollars in '70s, so whether the spreading stuff out, it's boom, boom, and we, we build and get done. The Bell Memorial Park project is, is highlighted on here as a total fund, as well as you can see, we have programming out for the city hall project, so that in 2017, when we need to be done with it and moved out of here, is funded as well. The other neat thing that happened on this spreadsheet as you go through it is you can kind of see on the left-hand side next to the capital project name, you get an idea of what the estimated total cost is, so you have some idea as you look at what the total project is, what previously was allocated to it, what's suggested for adding to this year, but then even more importantly, after you go beyond the seven years and you look out towards the right, you'll see what portion of those dollars we believe funds from the transferring from the general fund versus what funds exist from other funding sources, so let me highlight one, for example, Public Safety Communications, where you have a 20, a $2.2 million project, as you remember maybe from our work session, we were able to back $100,000 out of that because of that contract we awarded for construction of the tower, and we actually had a real number that we could then take a reduction against and be comfortable that we could make it work. What the $400,000 other funding source is, is that's the fund balance that's maintained right now with the 911 fund, so that is a very suitable project for those dollars to be used for, as you remember, maybe here from the last six months to a year or so, we restructured our agreement with Alpharetta, and rather than having a formula-based payment to use the dispatch center, we take those 911 funds fees which come into the city of Milton and simply hand them over to Alpharetta for the joint use of the 911 center between the two jurisdictions, and it funds with those dollars, so we, we really have a fund balance sitting around with a policy now at this point that doesn't let us do a whole lot else with it other than to clear it out, and this seems like a great project to be able to do that with, so that is an example of other funding source, if you go down and look at another one, you can see in pavement management how we have a million seven in each year, and you see a million four in other funding source, that would be the million four over seven years that we would anticipate receiving in LME funds to supplement the million seven, for example, and that would get us up to that million nine number that we look for every year. And then we show some unfunded amounts, and that unfunded amounts that you see are simply because the total project cost is expanding beyond the seven years, so you can see that even though we fund, for example, in the West Side Fire Station, $150,000 in year seven of this plan, there still remains a million nine-five in that project, you know, that would fund the design of the fire station, but it wouldn't fund the construction up, so I think you get a better snapshot by looking at this spreadsheet of the total capital, total capital plan, and how the projects work out over the seven years. I'd be happy to answer any questions on it, I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions about it tomorrow and the next day, and the next day too, we still have time with this if you want to, want to digest it, but I wanted to give you philosophically how we came up with these numbers, and then avail ourselves of any questions that you might have, either now or later in the week or whenever.
Buddy, any questions right now?
No, I'll just give it to you later in the week.
Yeah, I've been out of town, I haven't fully digested them, probably email you my questions.
If you all look, if you, if you want to come in and meet later in the week, I kind of got hit with this journey downtown Atlanta on Wednesday, which is going to not make for a pleasant Wednesday. I'm sorry, did I say that out loud?
I think, I think we heard you.
Either Thursday, Thursday morning would be good, or anytime on Friday, that would work the best because this is then the week that Saturday I travel to Charlotte and will be there through Wednesday of next week, so Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, either Thursday or Friday.
You're, you're okay, we meeting with a couple of us, we can go up to three people?
I'd rather keep it to two.
Two or less?
I think three gets close to that spirit of the open access, I don't want to get up against that.
I have meetings all day this Thursday and Friday downtown myself, so if I meet with you, maybe like the next Friday, I want to do it with you, maybe get back.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I just don't want you to think that I'm not available to you this week if you want to come in this week, if you can't make it till next week, I'm, I'm good with that.
That's fine, okay.
Because I just don't want you to think that I'm not available.